Welcome, everybody, to Grozeal Township Board of Trustees Business Meeting, 23 September 2019. Call the meeting to order at, let's make it 7:55. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in thy name.
Okay, the entire board is present. We'll conduct business as published, except I'm going to deviate from the published for just a second and ask Chief Warnock to give us an update on the missing woman. Wish you better news, Chief.
Very sad. On Monday, September 23, 2019, the Grozeal Police Department recovered the body of missing 51-year-old Christine Childs. Mrs. Childs was discovered in Detroit River close to her home. The body has been released to the Wayne County Medical Examiner's Office and an autopsy has been scheduled for 9/24/19. Cause of death has not been determined as of yet, and the investigation is ongoing. The search was aided by members of the Wayne County Sheriff's Department, Marine Division, United States Coast Guard, Woodhaven Police Department, members of Michigan Search and Recovery, and more than 1,000 volunteers. I just want to thank, our department did a wonderful job. Everybody did a great job. And all the citizens that came out, I've never seen nothing like it. It's such a sad tragedy. And that's all I can say right now.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks to the guys, fire, rescue, police, all the citizens who just dropped what they were doing to help out a member of our-
It was incredible. It really was. It's a wonderful place to work and live.
Let's take a few seconds just to keep their family and our thoughts and our prayers. Okay, thanks, everyone. Now, well, just back to business. We have some additions and deletions to tonight's agenda, and I'll introduce the first one. I'd like to add, petition the board to add action item number four of the 2019 winter tax levy. Okay, moved by the supervisor, seconded by treasurer, discussion among the board. Those in favor of adding action item four, the 2019 Township Winter Tax Levy to tonight's schedule or tonight's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That will be added. And another one, I'll bring this one up too. Like to add to consent agenda, item number seven, authority to pay bills through the- through October 4th. Okay, again, moved by the supervisor, seconded by the treasurer to add the authority to pay bills to October 4th as consent agenda item number seven. Discussion among the board? None offered. Those in favor of adding action or consent agenda item seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Those will be added. Other additions, deletions to tonight's agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to remove the minutes of September 9th regular meeting from the consent agenda this evening.
It can, if-
And move them to the action items.
We don't need to vote on that. Any member wants it moved to an action item, it's moved. So, that will be moved. Minutes, okay. So consent agenda item number one now becomes action item number five. Other additions, deletions to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, I would like to move to have a third discussion item, and it's in regards to action item number four from the previous meeting, but it's for, it's about procedure. It's not about, it's not about discussing the item itself, but the procedure in which it got to the vote was improper, and we need to correct it.
Second.
You know, I really wish you would have brought this up prior to, almost about to award a foul. If we're going to discuss this, we should have had a time to put our heads together and get some- But, the motion and the second is there. Those in favor of adding a discussion item on last board meeting's action item. Mr. Bledcher? I'll just go across, just so there's no doubt. Are you interested in that as an act, as a discussion item?
I am not.
Mr. Nelson?
No.
Madam Clerk?
No.
Supervisor, no. Mr. Treasurer? Mr. Budney?
Aye.
And Mr. Malvesto?
Aye.
That will not be added as a discussion item. Any other additions, deletions to tonight's agenda? Okay, with none offered, those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None offered, then let's get into work. We have no presentations scheduled. Public comment limited, please, to tonight's agenda items. Seeing none offered, let's move into the consent agenda minus consent agenda item number one. Mr. Treasurer?
Consent agenda is 19-040, and it'll include check register dated through September 20, 2019, Island Beautification Committee resignation, vacant golf you lots, consent judgment, Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission appointment, and Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission resignation.
And, yeah, authority for the bills.
Support.
And the authorization to pay bills through October 4th.
Support.
Okay, moved by the treasurer, seconded by trustee Budney, consent agenda 19-040. Those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That it will be approved. And just to take a second to thank Cindy Ackerman and Jane Feijal for their, for the contributions they made in their respective committee and commission, and welcome aboard Rebecca King to BPAC. Ah, moving on. Action items. Mr. Budney?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Based on the recommendation of the Grozeal Township Department of Public Service Commission and the Township Engineer, I'd like the Township Board to award a contract to low, the low bidder, Process Piping and Equipment Inc. for the installation of a new bar screen at the Grozeal Wastewater Treatment Plant and other associated work as indicated in the attached recommendation of award letter.
Okay, moved by trustee Buddy, seconded by treasurer Van Oss. This is, go ahead, Jim. This is involved, and this is why I say DPS is the hardest working group we have.
And just another one, and I am going to call Derek up here also, but while he's moving his way up here, what this is, these screens remove rags and other debris that flow into the wastewater treatment plant and are currently removed manually. What this, well, yeah, what this machinery will do is like, it's like scoops that will be on a conveyor, up and down, pick up that debris and take it, move it up, and put it in a dumpster. As we said, as I said, PPEI was the low bidder. The other additional work that was mentioned includes cleaning the wet well and repair to the sluice gate, which, just take my word for it, it's a gate that's there that opens and closes, and it's not, it's not working right now. We need that to cut off, cut off the flow so that they can work in the well, both of which are being coordinated along with this project. The engineers estimated the project at 1.4 million, so you can see this is not a meaningless piece of machinery. With additional work and a 20% contingency, we're still going to be $230,000 under budget, so, or under the estimate of 1.4. So, we felt that, you know, the process, piping and equipment, we're getting a good deal for our money. Funding will come from the recently approved bond issuance that we reviewed and voted on last meeting, and the item was budgeted in our 2019-20 budget, part of our overall capital improvement project. Derek, you have anything to add to that?
Trustee did a very good job of explaining it. These installations are similar to what a lot of the other wastewater treatment plants across the state of Michigan and nationwide are using. Rags and other materials such as that are posing a huge problem to wastewater treatment plants. These flushable wipes are continuing to be used in a heavier frequency by not only our residents, but residents all across the state and all across the country. Plants have traditionally used grinders to kind of emaciate that equipment or those items, but what they have a tendency to do is kind of coagulate back into the system and cause other problems downstream of the wet well. So, this is intended to remove those, permanently get rid of them, and not even let them enter the stream. This is a product, a brand, and a manufacturer that's kind of known as the standard. They're the Cadillac of bar screens and are known to be very reliable and work very well, and I think it's going to do a very good job for wastewater treatment plant.
Do we need to reiterate those warnings we put out in times past about what's flushable and what isn't? Basically, nothing more durable than toilet paper?
Yep, that's-
That'd pretty much do it, yep.
That's a good point, yeah.
Whether it's advertised as flushable or not, it isn't.
And that certainly is part of the problem. They talk about disposable, flushable, whatever, and they really aren't, and it is. It's a, yeah, it's a problem all over the nation. And not only was it, is it blocking, but it's also destroying our equipment. And, you know, I mean, in any wastewater treatment plant, it was actually destroying the equipment because all this coagulates, gets together, and it's like putting a weight on it that the equipment, the other equipment, that it can't move. So, it's something that's definitely needed.
And once it goes through the system, we have it in our storage tanks, and it's very difficult to get rid of once it's in there. So, at this point in time, we probably have over a foot of this stuff sitting in the bottom of our sludge tank, which the stuff gets in there and it coagulates almost like concrete. So, it reduces the overall capacity of the plant and causes a lot of problems. So, this is a budget item, as the trustee had mentioned earlier, and also through the work of our finance director and with this bond initiative, we're going to be able to do this without an increase in rates for this year. So, it's going to work out really well for us.
We all know a lot more about wastewater treatment plants than we did when we walked in. Any questions, comments for Mr. Thiel, trustee Budney?
Derek, I do.
Yes.
This material that you're going to be removing with this new equipment, does this put any additional burden as far as disposal on the plant? Or is it, is it just being, is it being deposited in something that you're already posting up?
It's a very good question. So, as you enter the plant, there's a wet well. So, it's basically a big concrete pit that goes deep into the ground. As the flow comes into the plant through the wet well, these bar screens sit inside the wet well like this, and it's more or less a conveyor. It's a screen that goes onto a conveyor. The conveyor goes up through the top of the wet well, through a hole in the wall into the garage after it's, it goes through a washer as well, these rags do. It dumps into a dumpster inside the garage, and that dumpster is taken away like regular garbage. So, it's disposed of that way. So, to answer your question, it's a completely standalone system from the plant. It doesn't put any additional strain on the plant. If anything, it increases the efficiency of the plant.
Yeah, and it cuts back on maintenance, but this will be, this will be disposed of in a separate manner, hauled away separately from other solids that-
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I was-
Yep, our sludge will go a different direction. We usually get rid of that about once a year. This dumpster, as it fills up, will dispose of it. It'll be washed, rags, and-
Would I be right if I said, if I said that it's going to, you know, a solid waste, solid, you know, waste landfill?
It'll go to a landfill that can support that type of disposal. That's correct, yep. So, there's different types of landfills that'll go to the appropriate one.
All right. That's, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments for Mr. Thiel? None offered. Those in favor of, based upon the recommendation of the Grozeal Township Department of Public Services Commission and the Township Engineer, Township Board hereby awards a contract to low bidder, Process Piping and Equipment Incorporated for the installation of new bar screens at the Grozeal Wastewater Treatment Plant and other associated work as indicated in the attached recommendation of award letter. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None offered? Well done. Action item number two, Mr. Malvesto?
All right, here we go. As recommended by the Grozeal Fire Commission and Fire Chief, is to award the bid to Apollo Fire Equipment, the sum of $38,178. And-
Support.
Now, I could, I could explain this, but I think that I'm going to give Chief the opportunity because this is the equipment that his men use, and he'll be far more informative as to why and why they need it.
Well, what we're in, what we're in the process of doing right now is, we have 25 members, and out of that 25 members, 18 members need gear replaced, and that's strictly their bunker coat and their bunker pants. The equipment that's presently on these members are about 18 years old. NFPA standard 1761, or one of the numbers is in there, 1971, requires us, under our code and standards, to replace it every 10 years. Well, under that standard, it depends on usage and wear and tear, UV lighting, and that kind of stuff. Well, presently, we got these current members with some tears in them that we've been sewing up, and the big one is the carcinogens that have entered the coats. They've been washed to the point where we can't get some of those carcinogens out anymore. And that's a big one in the fire service today, is carcinogens. We are only replacing 18 of the 25 because the other seven are newer members, and we've replaced that gear as they came onboard. The gear's running about $2,500, $2,600 a set, and that doesn't count boots, helmet, gloves, or hoods. Those additional items, which I've already replaced throughout the years, is still current and still in good shape, but this gear has really got to go. And I can't sell it. I can't turn it over to schools for educational use. I got to dispose of it. It's got to go. But it is an expensive item. I think we had five bidders. We were second from the bottom bid Apollo, which we have dealt with before. Bought a lot of equipment from them. They're very reputable, and they stand by their stuff. We're looking at about a 10-week window on even getting this gear in.
Just, go ahead, Jim. Just quickly, you say the Apollo was second. Why not the, why not the low bid?
The lowest bid was probably roughly about $1,000 difference between them and Apollo. I have had experience with that vendor before. They're the vendor that handles our siren system. I've had some issues with that vendor, and the actual gear that they were selling, I'm not familiar with. So, it's a, it's an East Coast gear that I'm not familiar with. The current gear that we're looking at, I'm extremely familiar with, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, is the stuff you're getting from Apollo, is it identical to or very similar to what the other seven members have? You have, you have no problem with interoperability?
Different manufacturer, but it's identical. It meets the NFPA standards for heat and carcinogens and all that kind of stuff.
So, there'd be no problem with interoperability or-
No, this is all personal. This is personal gear to each member. Yeah, I got guys, I got two guys on it. I got Lenny and another guy. They're like, they're like nine feet high, and they got size 16 feet. I mean, these guys are big. And those two guys, including Lenny, is custom-made gear. I can't, I just can't buy the stuff off the rack, so.
We'll see you back for that in another couple of years or so. Other questions, comments for Chief? When I was over at your shop the other day with the Coast Guard, you know, you had all that stuff hanging on the rack, and I'll tell you, it looked, it looked like you've gotten some, it looked like it doesn't owe you anything. You've gotten plenty of work out of them.
If you mind me, indulge me for a minute. The Coast Guard was in, supervisor with us, they were touring the facility in regards to water rescue, and they came in and they went, oh, boy. They, this department is definitely outfitted for water rescue. And they never call us out. We call the Coast Guard out, but it's very rare the Coast Guard calls us out. And what was their reasoning? They don't want to wake us up at night because they know we're volunteer.
I think-
That was their reasoning.
I think we convinced them otherwise that-
Yeah, we, we need to be called out because we're a quicker response than the Coast Guard, especially if they have low ceilings and they can't get their bird up. They, and then it's a 45-minute ride, just in one of their boats down here. So, it turns it in from a rescue into a body recovery. So, I think we can work hand-in-hand with the Coast Guard, which we always have, but we just kind of gave them a little shot in the arm saying, you know, call us, please. We're here, use us, so.
That was going to be something in my report, but since, since we're hot on the topic right now. It was, I think they had their eyes open. This volunteer fire department is, had 10 times the ability for ice rescue, probably twice the capability for water rescue than they have. And basically, they work one end of the river and we work the other end.
And you got to remember too, Grozeal, for the most part, has the most waterfront than any other community. We cover a lot of ground. Everybody thinks we go to the shoreline. No, we go out to the international line. We go into the middle of Trenton Channel. And for the most part, most of the local communities, we're taking, we're covering their water rescue for them. So, because we're well-equipped. And we took that on based on our, our location. We have to have it, so. Sorry about that, I got off tangent.
No, it's, that was, again, it was time well-spent. We learned a lot about the Coast Guard. They learned a lot about us. So, it was, it was a great way to spend a rainy afternoon. Other, other questions, comments for the chief? None offered. Those in favor of following the recommendation of the Grozeal Fire Commission and the Fire Chief to award the bid to Apollo Fire Equipment for the sum of $38,187, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None offered? That, spend it wisely, chief. Step number three, Mr. Bledcher?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Based upon the recommendation of CE Rains Company and the recommendation of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission to award the 2019 Pathways Rehabilitation to Al's Ashfall Paving Company in the amount of $180,000.
Yeah, I'll support that, and fill us in.
Explanation minus is the pathways rehabilitation consists of pavement repair, crack sealing, seal coating, and the bike path at locations identified by BPAC, DPS staff, and the engineer. The contractor is required to begin to work immediately, so the work will be completed prior to the end of this construction season. Project was bid by the Township Engineer. Three bids were picked up. One bid was returned and received. BPAC held a meeting to review and recommend the award on September 19, 2019. While only four members were present, two other members called in via telephone conference. Engineering costs are estimated at approximately $25,000. I have the pleasure tonight of presenting to the board Brian Pollock, who is the Chair of BPAC. If Brian could come up to the microphone and explain the project by starting out what your background is with Wayne County and what you do, because you seem to be uniquely qualified for this job.
Well, thank you, Mr. Trustee. I'm Brian Pollock, 218-78, Newtons Drive, Grozeal, Michigan. And my day job is, I work for SEMCOG, Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. We are a regional planning agency and council of governments where we provide information on, you know, technical assistance to communities and on issues that go beyond jurisdictional boundaries. So, you know, think transportation, you know, environmental and pollution aspects, economic development, tourism. We help communities figure out, you know, ways, you know, to move forward and be successful. We're also responsible for making sure that we have a fiscally constrained, you know, long-range plan from a transportation side. I personally do bicycle pedestrian planning, so, you know, I get the luxury of going all across Southeast Michigan and working with communities on different aspects of planning and bringing together, you know, different stakeholders in order to reach a common vision. So, you know, I do a lot of planning in the day job, and I have the luxury of, you know, serving as the commission. I have the Chair of our Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission here on Grozeal. I've been doing that for probably around 10 years now. And so, you know, I get to go from being more of a planner to potential implementer. And so, you get to, you know, practice what I preach sort of aspects. So, you know, as folks probably understand that, you know, our pathways are no different than our roads, that we need proper maintenance in order, you know, make sure that they have a long life. Similar to, you know, a house, well, you can inspect your roof every once in a while and, you know, take care of small leaks along the way, or you can let it go and you can have, you know, your deck rot and potentially have to replace the entire roof and all the across members associated with that. We're trying to avoid those aspects with our, with our bike paths. So, we do have a maintenance millage, and that maintenance millage was passed a few years ago, and that's 0.1489 mils. Basically, if you have a house that's worth about, you know, $200,000, it equals just under, you know, $15 per year in income for each household. So, that generates approximately $90,000 that we can use for maintenance. And so, over the past year, you may have seen that we have taken care of all of the bike path bridges. So, two of them were just, you know, staining, you know, washing and staining. It was just routine stuff. Our Meridian Bridge across from Meridian Elementary, it had some, you know, structural issues, so we needed to take care of that, so that way, again, we didn't have to rebuild the whole thing. To, you know, actually rebuild the whole thing, it would have been probably around $150,000. Combined with all three bridges worth of work, you know, we spent less than $70,000. So, we're happy that, you know, our maintenance, we have, we're happy to have that maintenance budget and happy to be able to do that preventative maintenance in order to save the township in the long run. We want to apply the same logic to our asphalt paths. So, as trustee Blotcher mentioned, you know, BPAC has teamed up, you know, with DPS, with the Township Engineers at CE Rains, did a pathway assessment looking at which sections fall into good, fair, and poor condition. Poor condition is where you need to rebuild the pathway. Fair and good is where you provide, again, your preventative maintenance, and that way you can extend the life. So, you know, we have, based on the budget that we have available to us, the best way to try and use as much of that maintenance budget upfront, so that way, we're spending less to, you know, basically redo poor pavement in the future. So, as trustee Blotcher mentioned, you know, we'll be doing, you know, 12,000 square yards of asphalt emulsion slurry, 3,000 square yards of rotor mill and overlay of hot-mix asphalt, you know, 25,000 square yards of full, I'm sorry, 25, 2,000 square yards of full-depth repair. And so, that's, again, replacing the whole path in certain sections. 10,000 linear feet of crack sealing, as well as to make sure that if there's tree roots along the pathway that could be ripping up the asphalt, that we remove those trees. So, we're trusting the, you know, based on the bids that came in, utilizing CE Rains for that front, but we think it's best to spend this money now, so that way we don't have to spend more later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pollock, but don't go away. Questions, comments from the board? I think you pretty much covered everything, Brian.
I, I do notice that the bid price was slightly higher than what we've moved to spend. Did the bidder basically say, abandoned that $388?
I would have to double-check into that. As far as I know, we were still awarding $180,000. So, it's based on a unit basis, whatever we can, you know, spend, you know, based on those units, you know, that's how, how much we're going to actually be able to do, but this is our target range.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? None offered. Those in favor of, again, based upon the recommendation of the CE Rains Company and the recommendation of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission award the 2019 Pathways Rehabilitation to Al's Asphalt Paving Company Incorporated in amount of up to $180,000. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None offered? That is, will carry. Thank you. Okay, our added action item number four. I move that the Grozeal Township Board of Trustees, by resolution, levies on the taxable value of the township for the year 2019, winter billing, a tax of 10.9137 mils on the taxable value thereof, said value being $623,346,850.
Support.
I'll give it, I'll give it to the treasurer, but thank you. Okay, we have to, you know, this is how we pay the bills. Every year, we, twice a year, we have to levy the summer. The board levies the summer and winter taxes. They've been prepared by Mrs. Gate and our assessor. So, the background, 2019 winter tax levy must be approved by the board by September 30, and the L4029, which is the form that has all this information, submitted to Wayne County. Millage rate is being calculated using a millage reduction fraction, otherwise known as the Headley Millage Reduction Fraction. The Headley Amendment was passed by the voters of the state of Michigan in 1978, requires local unit government to reduce its millage when annual growth on existing property is greater than the rate of inflation. The pass of proposal A in 1994, the growth on existing property is impacted by the uncapping of taxable value due to a transfer on a property. The uncappings cause the taxable value to increase in most cases greater than the rate of inflation. Little background information, it has bearing on this when you look at our original allocated millage back when the county had an allocation board, was 1.85 mils. And Headley has knocked that down to 1.25 mils, little over $300,000 difference. It hurts. In both those legislations, there was never a provision for the fact that property values might decline. And, uh, that's just what happens when you don't do thorough homework on passing legislation. Nobody ever thought property's values could go down. But anyway, here we are. I will have, I will read the resolution. And it goes, resolved by the Grozeal Town, by Township of Grozeal Board of Trustees, that there be levied on the taxable property of said township for the year two thousand nineteen, a winter billing for the township purposes, a tax of ten point nine-one-three-seven mils on the taxable value thereof, said value being six hundred and twenty-three million, three hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Those millages being allocated millage, one point two-five oh-three mils. Extra voted millage, one point nine-zero-four-eight mils. Police, point nine-nine-one-nine mils. Second police, point seven-four-six-zero mils. And police, point nine-nine-five-five mils. Fire operations, one point four-eight-seven-eight mils. Fire equipment, point four-nine-five-four mils. Recreation, point four-nine-five-four mils. Recreation operations, point three-seven-two-nine mils. Road maintenance, point three-nine-six-six mils. Drainage, point three-two-eight-two mils. Library, point two-zero-zero mils. Judgment bond, one point one-zero-zero mils. Bike path maintenance, point one-four-eight-nine mils, for a total millage of ten point nine-one-three-seven mils. Total operations, nine point eight-one-three-seven mils. Total debt, one point one-zero-zero mils. I guess, those in favor, favor of levying, uh, uh, levy for the winter tax of two thousand nineteen, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None offered? It is hereby adopted. Thank you for letting us keep the lights on. Uh, with that, uh, Mr. Malvesto, move to action item number five, the, uh, minutes of the September ninth board meeting. Could I have a motion, please?
Uh, I support it. Well, I can't support it. I made the motion, so.
Well, I, I need, I need a motion for the, for the record, that.
Three, uh, the.
What do you want to see?
Okay, my, my, my motion was to remove the, uh, the minutes of September ninth, two thousand nineteen regular meeting.
You don't want to make an amendment, you just want it removed?
I don't want to discuss them.
Okay. Well, that would be, so, again, I'm reaching for a motion here. I'm, I move that we review the minutes and change, umptie umptie? Or review all of it, or do nothing?
Want to change? Uh, would be item number four, uh, on the, and of our minutes, specifically.
Okay, so.
Four point nineteen dash oh thirty-nine.
Okay, so we, I need a motion that. Action item number four is recorded in the minutes is wrong, is, needs to be amended, needs to be clarified?
It's a, it's inaccurate.
And it needs to be clarified?
So, it needs to be clarified and amended. Sorry about that.
Okay, so, let's see if.
Mr. Malvesto, you need to make a motion as to what specifically you want done with the minutes.
The motion I'm making is to review the minutes as written and amend them to correct, to correct them, because there's some, uh, inaccurates, inaccurate minutes here. That's the best I can put it right now.
Well, I have a motion. Okay, now we have, now we have a motion.
Support.
And we have a second. Mr. Malvesto.
All right, uh, I suppose I can explain what I'm, what I'm getting at, what I'm talking about? Yeah. Uh, it says, motion, Bletcher, second Loftus, removed, uh, Robert Zalasko and Michael Jurecki from the Grozeal Township Police Commission, effective immediately. And furthermore, to appoint Eric Rankin to the police commission, uh, effective October eighth, two thousand nineteen, through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and to appoint Jerry Madioli. And it goes on and on. It says, board discussion ensued by trustees, Bletcher and Bundy. Motion, Bletcher, second Loftus, to call the question. Roll call vote. Then it goes on to say, yes, Bletcher, Nelson, O'Connor, Loftus. Nobody was, nobody else was allowed to vote. Motion was approved. There were, there were no, uh, there were no, it said none, for no votes, there were none. Motion approved four, four to nothing. And I, 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 I.
Okay, that was towards the roll call vote.
That was towards calling, that was calling the question. Uh, this was done inappropriately. It was, it was, did not follow Robert's rules. And in fact, to approve this, you needed two-thirds. Not, not, not a four, not, not four votes, you needed five votes. Mr. Bundy and myself were not allowed to vote on this. You ignored us completely. So, if we, if this board is following Robert's Rules of Law and it required on a, on a call, call the question, it required a two-thirds, you needed five votes. And you did not allow us to vote. You ignored us completely. And you were asked, don't we get a chance to vote? And you continued to ignore us. That in itself would invalidate the next vote to remove these two gentlemen.
Well, I'm going to disagree.
Well, you can disagree all you want, but we, we, this board follows Robert's Rules of Law. It took two-thirds to pass this.
Rules of order.
Robert's Rules of Order, excuse me.
They are not binding law.
So, we choose what we, we choose now what we're going to adhere to and what we're going to ignore. This is what you're telling me.
It's, our basis has always been, we've tried to follow Robert's rules as much as possible unless state law or other, uh, precedents preclude it.
So, you're choosing to ignore this.
We had a roll call vote and it went five to two in favor of the motion, so.
No, 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 you're, you're going back to the, you're going back to the original one to call the question. That stopped all debate. We were no longer allowed to debate the, the, uh, the motion in front of us.
Well, I think, basically, as moderator under state law, I can, I can demand a vote at any time in the process. I basically.
It's still, under Robert's rules, it requires a two-thirds, not a.
I think the state allows me, as the moderator, to determine when it's time to vote, um, um, calling the question or not, and have the vote. And the vote was five to two.
It was, it certainly was not. We are, I am talking specifically about calling the question.
Well, I guess I erred in not getting the fifth vote, but at the end of the day, the vote that mattered was the.
You erred in ignoring our, we questioned you, do not, we don't get a chance to vote, and you ignored us. It requires on calling the question, two-thirds. It not, not a four, not a four to three, a five to two.
All right, let me make a, let me make a statement here. Consider me advised, but the five to two vote still carries.
You, you can't.
We, we have.
You could not move beyond calling the question because you did, you did not allow us to vote.
What is the motion to amend and correct? What are, I don't know what we're amending. We're not, we're not amending the outcome.
No, he's amending, changing the minutes. That's the motion.
No, if we want to.
What do you want the minutes?
Two weeks from now, if you want to bring this back up and have this discussion.
The, what are the, what in the minutes do you want amended?
I wanted to reflect the fact that you ignored us. You did not allow us the opportunity to vote on this, on the calling of question.
We want to add a clause, supervisor did not allow trustees Bundy and Malvesto to opine?
You have a motion, and you have a second.
The, the minutes as they are presented are the minutes of what happened at the meeting. So, they are an accurate reflection of what was said at the meeting. So, the, the minutes themselves are not at fault.
No, you're, you're, you're absolutely right, Madam Clerk. You're absolutely right. I would have thought, I would have thought that you would have caught that, uh, the, the two-thirds vote requirement at the time.
Anyway, anybody, uh, the, the minutes then remain accurate. Any, uh, interest in this board? We've got a motion and a second. Those in favor of, I don't even know what the, I don't even know what the, how the minutes would be amended. I, I, since we are in agreement that they're accurate.
No, you go, go ahead. I, I, I should probably just pull my motion.
I'll second that.
All right.
Those in favor of, uh, rescinding the motion, signify by saying aye.
But motion.
Rescinding the motion that, that Mr. Malvesto made and trustee Bundy.
Second it. And. Aye.
Trustee Malvesto opted to rescind his, uh, motion. I seconded. Those in favor of rescinding the motion?
I think our attorney.
Aye.
Thank you. Then, okay, moving on.
So, now I need to make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting.
Yes.
Correct. Thank you.
Of September ninth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second. The motion is to approve the minutes that we took off the consent agenda. So, Madam Clerk has moved that we approve the minutes as published, seconded by the supervisor. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Oh, that concludes tonight's action items. Um, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. We don't have, um, anything, uh, regarding the clerk's office to report. I do want to report that today I was invited to attend the Southern Wayne County Chamber of Commerce Legislative Breakfast. The speaker was, uh, Senator Debbie Stabinow. And, um, it was, uh, while attended, Grozeal High School, um, had one of its, uh, civics classes present, about eight students, I believe. And, um, the, the takeaway was Senator Stabinow, uh, made it clear she has heard Down Rivers complaints about infrastructure, mainly the trains, and that she is continuing to work with, uh, Representative Dingle, and trying to work across the aisle to gain support to bring relief to this area regarding the, the transportation issues surrounding the trains and the roads. So, uh, it was, it felt positive at any rate. And, um, our representative Camilleri was there and he was also meeting with her after, um, the forum to discuss, um, roads and railroads. So, just to say, there is some, uh, political movement afoot between our state and, um, national representatives.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Treasurer.
Uh, the August, financial avail, information is not yet available, but it will be posted on my website for review on where our investments are. Uh, the treasurer's office, uh, was collecting summer tax payments for mortgage companies and individuals that were due on September the sixteenth. The treasurer's office will continue to accept summer tax payments by mail and in person, online. However, one percent late penalty for each calendar month, starting September seventeenth, will be added. Please note that Grozeal Branch of Public Services Credit Union, excuse me, cannot accept late payments. Property owners can check online at grozeal.com or call the office to obtain the actual, accurate late penalty amounts. As of September twenty-third, we've collected fifty-two percent of the two thousand nineteen summer tax bills. Distribution of the counties and the school have been made in time. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. We'll move on to, uh, trustee liaison reports. Uh, Mr. Bletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Regarding the Grozeal Police Department Officers in August drove fourteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine miles. Field activity included one OWI for the month, down from the average of three that we'd had for the past several months, for a total of thirty-two year to date. Officers have issued one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven verbal warnings year to date, twenty-six warrant arrests year to date, twelve felony arrests year to date, misdemeanor arrests fifty-eight year to date, accident reports fifty-two year to date, and they've issued a hundred and fifty-one security notices year to date. Continuing emphasis on training that was a hallmark of Chief Baron and Chief Porcelle. We had forfeiture training for detectives Vasquez and Darznik. We had license to purchase pistol and firearms disqualifications by Deputy Chief Brent Harden. Labor law and labor arbitration, it was attended by Chief Mark Warnock and Deputy Chief Brent Harden. Leading without rank leadership for the line officer, attended by Officer Greg Keriko. Lieutenant Pellon was involved in the alert lockdown, inform, counter, evacuate training program that is used for the Grozeal schools in response to violent critical incidents. And last but not least, we had Officer Todd Brozick, who participated in dive training. Also would bring to the attention of the board, um, Lori Polgar, attended, uh, one of our meetings here over the summer and proposed that we have a golf cart ordinance that would allow the use of golf carts, private golf courts, golf carts on Grozeal streets. She has submitted to the township board a, um, request with thirty-six signatures, um, that this be considered. She has also attached a City of Gibraltar Golf Court Guidelines and, um, proposed, uh, registration permit. I have spoken with deputy, or with Chief Warnock and, uh, Deputy Chief Harden has, um, researched the issue and we would propose to take that up at our next police commission meeting. Simply put, she wants to be able to use golf carts as opposed to, uh, cars and bicycles to, uh, shop locally and, uh, visit neighbors and friends. And, uh, this is used in a number of communities. Um, I think, Mr. Supervisor, you said here on township was the last one? And, uh, they did that just, uh, within the last thirty days and it seems to be a growing trend. And, uh, it appears to be time to, uh, at least consider that. And that will be tossed around pros and cons at the next commission meeting. With respect to the, um, Greenways Open Space, I have been advised that this afternoon, we received documents that on their face appear to resolve the issues with the acquisition of the lot on Ferry Road that will allow us to reconnect the trail to Gage. Those have been presented. It is my understanding that, uh, to the township and to the township attorney, and those will be presented to the title company for processing and hoping that will get us to where we need be to acquire the property that's been previously approved by the board and we can go forward and complete that trail. Hopefully, having that done within the next couple of weeks, so that we can then begin to, um, put the trail in during the comparatively drier fall season as opposed to the expected to be, you know, a much wetter spring season. But with all the rain we've had, I don't know that, uh, we'll be able to do all that this year, but it is hoped for. With respect to Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory, I'd again thank Chairman Pollack for coming in and making a presentation. He really is an authority on transportation and bicycles and is a terrific leader for BPAC. It is with sorrow that we note that Jane Fajal, who's been a member since two thousand and twelve, some seven years, is going to be leaving the commission. She has had a number of other commitments that are just, uh, pressing. And Nicole left, uh, last month, but, uh, Nicole is, uh, returning at least in, um, spirit because we have, um, many of you will have seen the walk to school, um, bike to school, um, program that is set up for Wednesday, October two, two thousand nineteen. Rebecca Klug, who is the new member, thanks to your vote tonight, of BPAC, um, has been a volunteer to the commission. She has organized, uh, these days before, we're a middle school at this point, on October second, will be invited to walk or bike to school. Um, she has been working with Chief Warnock on it. Unfortunately, we do have a number of training scheduled for that day. But, uh, Mark and the entire department will do the best they can to make sure that this is a safe event for all of the middle schoolers. I would indicate that, uh, this is a flyer that's going to be going out. And when I say that Nicole is there, she is offering a voucher or a coupon, uh, for a free cone at Custard Corner. So, you can walk and bike on Grozeal and then pick up your free cone at their family business, uh, at Custard Corner. And again, um, if you have children that are of, uh, age and use the middle school, please look for the flyer and, uh, try and make that a safe and, uh, happy event for everybody. And if we could have dry day that day, it would be wonderful. And, um, that concludes my report on those three commissions. Brian, is there anything else you wanted to say?
I'll just add that, you know, I was very fortunate to work with Nicole Gahl as well as Jane Fajal. Jane goes back to the origins of the BPAC and she's been instrumental in safe routes, you know, within the, uh, walk to school day, bike to school day, lazy ride, glow roll, basically all of our programming. She's had a, a major hand in it. So, greatly appreciative of all her work. Um, and, you know, while both her and Nicole and I just, you know, recently found out that, uh, Virginia Gatchell or Jenny Gatchell is resigning, all three of them are resigning not because of issues with BPAC, but more so that they just have a lot of commitments and they realize that they were not able to make the township, I mean, the, uh, the BPAC meetings. And so, it's been difficult for us to reach quorum at times with nine members. And so, they're freeing up those spots. That way, there's people that are, you know, interested and can attend, can, uh, have their say, say-so on the actual commission. And all three of them, you know, plan to be, uh, involved as a volunteer effort like over the next couple of years. So, again, appreciative of all their efforts and I'm happy to report that you'll still be seeing them volunteering in some capacity.
Thanks, Brian.
That's all I have, Mr. Supervisor. You had a comment, Mr. Nelson? You had a comment, Mr. Nelson?
Brian, one thing, Mr. Thiel, who was in Gibraltar for six, seven, eight years, he was there when the golf cart proposal came forward and passed. Is that correct, Derek? So he should be a good resource for us to figure ours out so that we can do it the right way. And I'd like to have Derek involved as much as possible. Thank you.
They didn't want, yeah, appreciate it, Brian, but you're off the hook for at least a little while. Mr. Bundy.
Mr. Supervisor. No ZBA meeting tomorrow. However, on Wednesday, we do have our monthly question and answer session. It'll be here in the boardroom at 6 o'clock. And I'm going to take a little bit of time here. There's a couple of items that I believe need to be mentioned to the people of Grozile. One of them, I want to explain why I wanted a discussion item. And again, it's because of the policy. It's not the issue itself. It's the matter of procedure and policy. The issue involved, the calling of the question, that was, that was, Mr. Melvesto was in the middle of his deliberation on the issue, and Mr. Bletcher called the question. That's improper. And that's improper. The individual talking is supposed to be able to complete his deliberation before the next person is, Mr. Bletcher in this case would have been recognized and called the question. The vote was improper, mainly because there are only five allowed to vote, or five people were talked to, the other two were told, "It's over." That, anybody out there should recognize, if you have a board of seven, there should be seven votes. Not to do it, you know, just as improper. I believe because of the impropriety of the way the calling of the question was handled, and the big thing with calling of the question is to end debate and discussion. Because that was wrong, that debate and discussion should have continued before we held our vote. It didn't. We went right to the vote, and it was voted. And yes, I do believe the 5-2 vote is legal from that standpoint. However, the debate was cut off just because they wanted to. I don't think this is the type of government the residents of Grozile deserve. If we're going to ask them to follow regulations, rules, we need to follow the rules that we have adopted for ourselves. And we're not doing it, and I believe it was wrong, and that's why I wanted to bring it forth. Also, as pointed out by Mr. Melvesto, calling of the question under Robert's Rules requires a two-thirds, a two-thirds majority, not a simple majority.
I'm going to interrupt you, Mr. Bundy. The board, you're discussing the item the board did not want you to discuss by vote.
No, we, I'm just, I'm making, I'm making my comments. We're not discussing it. I'm making my comments. And that's, and Brian, that is all I have to say on that. It's up to the people, the residents of Grozile, to decide what we're doing up here. The other item that I want to take a little bit of time to discuss, and I've witnessed this myself, and it's, now it's the residents. The residents coming into our offices and not only standing at a counter and yelling at our employees, but cursing at them for everybody to hear. I find that totally improper. I find it that, if I had my way, I wouldn't let our employees talk to those people anymore. I would say, for those people who want to conduct their business that way by cursing at our employees, that from now on, if you have a complaint about something, you put it in writing, you drop it off. You got to remember, anything on complaints, especially dealing with the building department, there's nothing that requires us to get back to you, the complainant, to tell you what went on. You make the complaint that your neighbor is doing something wrong. It's up to us to go out and investigate that. Once we investigate it, if they were doing something wrong, you'll see a change. If they weren't, you won't see a change. It's as simple as that. There's no discussion. And these people coming in, and it really, I know I keep saying it, but cursing at our employees, that's just bull. But you're also constantly taking up their time, which means they can't spend their time on the rest of the community. So as I say, I would have no problem with our people not talking to those people anymore. But the idea that they can come in and act like that is ridiculous, and we shouldn't stand for it. My comment. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
I don't think our employees need to stand for it either. And I guess Dale will give them guidance that if, when it gets heated, it's over. You know, if it's cordial, meaningful conversation, but if it gets heated, if it gets effrontery, it's over.
And we got to turn them away. Yeah.
But anyway, we will, we will, Jim, we will back up our employees, you know.
I think we should.
Thank you for that. Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Mal, thanks, Jim. Mr. Melvesto.
Chief. I hate to do this to you. We really didn't talk about this. I'll keep it simple. Can you talk to the success of the golf outing?
Great success. I think everybody that was there had a great time. I know I did. I was tired.
I heard.
It was a long day. So it was a great success, and I want to thank the community and everybody that showed up for that outing and supported the firefighters. That was a, it was a great event. So on a couple of notes real quick, just want to bring up to the residents what's going on with their driving and things of that nature, and I hope Mark can back me up a little bit. When driving across the Free Bridge or any bridge that we're going across, don't continue to move. Either stop and let us go by, because sometimes these bridges are slippery, they're wet, and we got to make some quick moves, but just stop and quit moving. And it's true, just stop. Because for my guys with the ambulance, they're trying to determine what you're going to do. We've had people cut in front of the ambulance, we've had people pass us. This is, this kind of stuff is very, very dangerous. So, and we've also had people tailgating the ambulance because they're in a hurry. So you never know what that rig is going to do if we have to make a quick change. We got to make a quick decision. The law, Mark, if I'm not mistaken, is either stop or pull to the right and stop. We're not, we're seeing, we're not seeing it. So it's starting to become commonplace that we continue to move while emergency vehicles are moving. So I just want to get that out to the residents. Just please stop where you are if you can't pull to the right. If you can pull to the right and stop, please do so. So we can get to wherever we have to go in a timely fashion.
Yeah, I was unaware of that on the bridge, and you want?
During the wintertime?
Stop, let the ambulance go around.
Yeah, and then, yeah. And then if you are, if we have two cars going side by side, and they both stop side by side, and the ambulance behind you, common sense tells you, the car in front of the ambulance, please move forward and get off the, get off the bridge. Just some common sense stuff, so.
It's that gap between the oncoming traffic and the car, or cars that are in front of the ambulance. If they keep moving, that gap closes up, and then if they stop, and there is no, there is no longer a gap there for you to get around, that creates a problem. Now you've got a traffic jam. So the best thing to do is just stop, allow that gap to remain as it is, so that you can get around.
Yeah, and when you're coming across the bridge, especially the Free Bridge, is if you see us coming and you're on the other side of the span, stop there because the ambulance takes up every inch of that lane. So, and it gets extremely tight when we go across. Can't tell you how many mirrors we've replaced. So we've gone through quite a few mirrors. So it's just a kind of a tidbit.
Just a quick question, and maybe this also goes to Chief Warnock. I noticed that too, when you're on the highway, when police or there's an accident, pulled over to the right, drivers are supposed to actually move over a lane to the left, correct?
I think that's correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I also noticed people don't tend to do that, and I was just curious if that was still required.
Just a couple other things, just like today, we just did, we had seven rescues today. And just to let you know, I got a half a dozen of my volunteers that are self-employed during the day, never made it to work. So it was a busy day for the department. Right now, we're at about 500 total calls with three months to go, three and a half months, three months and a week to go. So we're going to be close to 700 calls this year we're responding to. One other, two other things. If you're crossing the bridge and you're biking, please walk your bike across the bridge. Don't, that bridge is so narrow. Please walk your bike across the bridge, because we've had accidents on that bridge where people have fallen off their bikes, and we've had accidents. So if you, please, walk your bike across the bridge, it's too narrow. The last thing for the Board's information, I got a state memo a few days ago. It's actually been in the works for about, since about 2015. Our AFFF foam, our B foam, which is not structural firefighting foam, it's gas, it's those type, it's oils, those type of fires, gas station fires, car fires, is being taken off the market, and they want us to remove it from our station. The state wants us to dispose through their Department of Michigan Firefighters Training Council, through the Fire Marshal's Division, to get rid of it. I have replaced most of our foam with non-toxic Class B AFFF foam. The problem is, I'm disposing of probably close to $4,000 worth of foam that I got to get rid of. So.
There was the PFOS foam?
The PFOS foam, where they use, they predominantly use it in airport settings. Where it came to light was Grayling up at the Air National, is it Air National Guard Base up there?
National Guard.
National Guard Base up there, and the PFOS were getting into the drinking water. So the State Fire Marshal, we're one of the first states to go push it through, is they want all PFOS foams, all AAA, AFFF, toxic firefighting foams removed off the market. So, and out of our fire stations. So I will be disposing of about $4,000 worth of foam.
The state's paying for its disposal? We're paying for its disposal.
And I understand, they've discovered it's not healthy. And it's been on the market since I've been a firefighter for 41 years. We've been using PFOS.
Early 70s.
Yeah, it's an old foam, but it's now discontinued, and it was due to the Grayling incident that took place.
Do you use it often here on the island, or no, right?
No. We use a lot of Class A.
Yep.
We use a lot of Class A foam. Not structural firefighting foam, that's biodegradable. So, but the PFOS, we don't use a lot of it. Car fires, those type of things, yes, we do use it.
Not anymore.
Not anymore. I've replaced all that foam with the new stuff.
What you happened to bring up in your report that your volunteers are sometimes not making it to work because they're volunteering so much, which is a tribute to them, don't get me wrong. But have you, as a department, as your commission, addressed the potential of possibly, what would it take to go professional or to support these firefighters when they miss work? You know, when they miss their income?
The general, the membership as a whole enjoys this volunteer system. I mean, that's why it works so well. As a fire chief, would I like another 10 guys? Absolutely. But budget restraints because of the, how the, everything took place over the last 10 years, which it's coming back, it controlled how many people I could hire. So that being said, yeah, maybe down the road someday. It's getting tougher and tougher nationwide to employ volunteer firefighters. Is there a possibility of changing something? Yes, possibly. You could possibly go to a part-time fire department like Riverview. You could go to Creher, but that comes with a lot of expense. I mean, you'll be doubling, if not tripling, my budget. So I would say if there was to be any change, it would probably be out of the volunteer system into a part-time system, and that would be because you could hire people from off-island, and they'd have a rotation of time. But that being said, everything is working like clockwork right now.
So your volunteers are not unhappy?
Oh, God, no.
Okay.
God, no, they're not unhappy. They're, I'm just giving you what they're up against, and we've talked about it at a command officer level, and they're happy.
That's good to know.
They're extremely happy. So they just want it left alone, they'll continue to battle it and make the calls, so.
Well, let them know how much the entire community appreciates it, of course.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Additionally, I'd like to just say how many of Trustee Bundy's remarks are the same feelings that I have. What took place was predetermined. Nothing was going to change that arbitrator, mediator, reasoning, nothing was going to change. It was predetermined. But it's the way we, it's the way we go about doing it. It's following procedure. There are policies and procedures. We say we, every year we vote in the Robert's Rules, and we're going to follow them. And then to start picking and choosing what we're going to follow and what we're going to ignore out of a matter of convenience, that's a real problem. It doesn't, it doesn't serve you as the residents of this island well. It doesn't serve any purpose other than the further personal agendas. And again, right along with Mr. Bundy, I really agree with almost everything he said. That being said, we are, we have contacted the Attorney General, and we're looking into the matter, starting with the way the call to question and the vote was taken there. So I don't, I don't believe that this is going to be the end of it. We're going to pursue it, and it's not just for ourselves as individuals, it's for what happens in this township representing you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Melvesto. Mr. Nelson?
Yes, Ms. O'Farrell will give the Recreation Department update and report. And then it, the, there's a discussion item. Brian, do you want to do it, you want to do it two different times for report and then do the discussion later? Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. Just a couple announcements from the Recreation Department. The next Community Recreation Commission meeting is this Thursday at 6:00 PM. For those who are interested in what Recreation is doing, you could attend that and learn about some things that are coming down the pipeline. So that's really all I have on that. But I am going to take a moment, I was not here during the meeting, the last board meeting, to stand up and, I don't want to say defend myself, but at least comment on Trustee Melvesto's with the sled hill and those types of things. I know that is a discussion item, which I will save the discussion item till the discussion time, but I am standing here to let the community know that I did follow procedure. I took this project to my commission, not once, but twice, but probably six months' worth of communication of projects in reference to the airport recreation area land. So this wasn't a one, two, three, let's take a sled hill down, you know, get kids upset, and, you know, turn into a monster on social media in 24 hours. So I want to let the board know and the community know that my commission thoroughly talked about it. I brought it properly to the board with two quotes. So my question to the board tonight, am I the only manager that has brought quotes to the board? I asked tonight, was the bids presented by BPAC tonight in the form of a bid, or were they quotes? I'm curious to know, as a new manager, what is allowed to come to the board and what is not allowed to come to the board. So tonight, the board approved the BPAC bid for $180,000. Was that put in the paper? Was that, did that go out for bid? I don't know the answer to that. I worry about my department and my department only. So I'm asking that question. Did that go out for bid? It did? Okay. My question to ask. But my second question is, on my project, as Dale and I learned with this grant, that this is the first time I was involved in this grant, I felt that I was under a time restraint as far as my communications with Wayne County. And when Dale and I spoke, that we felt, we've got to get moving, we got to hurry, or we're going to lose this $50,000. So that was my only reason, and I know we're talking about procedures, and I understand, I follow them by the back of my hand for 24 years in government. So, when I brought that to the commission, my commission approved it, I brought it to the board, the board approved the, that night. We all did, we were all here. So I think what I'm trying to learn as one of the newer managers on the team is, if we approved that, that night, and everything to be kosher that evening, I'm trying to figure out why we're going backwards to talk about it. That's my question to the board, why are, why are we going backwards when procedures were followed? And I, again, I know I'm not the only manager that has brought quotes, there is a difference, at least that's what I learned in college. A quote, you can receive three to four quotes from three to four different vendors. And a bid is a bid packet that goes out for bid, documents in the paper, and so forth. So, does everyone understand where I'm coming from?
I'm, I'm having a little problem because you're saying you followed procedure, but
Right.
there weren't bids on that project, is that, there were quotes.
There were quotes.
But when, when it was discussed with the board, it, the term that was used was bids. So we sat here thinking
It was a bid.
There was a bid.
Right.
Later on, we find out there wasn't any bids, so, so there, that's it.
Right, and that's why I'm saying, I'm with you on that.
And there is, and you're
I don't want to cut you both off, but we have a whole discussion item set up for this.
Right. And I'm, I just wanted to bring up my questions to the board, and we can continue that, because I was not here.
And, and let me just say, the, the reason those two items came up in the discussion items now is simply at our last board meeting, trustee Malvesto asked to revisit them at that meeting and there was no, no backup information, no preparation.
Sure.
So, we put it on the agenda for this meeting.
Right.
Thinking that would give everybody time to come up with the backup information. So we simply put those motions back on the agenda as a discussion item. They still stand, they have not been rescinded. And if I'm not mistaken, we'll have to ask the township attorney, but if they are to be rescinded, there would have to be new motions. So I, I just wanted you to know, they're only there because they were asked to be put there. They have not been rescinded, they have not, nothing's changed. We were just asked to put those on the agenda.
Right. And, and I thoroughly understand the procedure, that anything over 5,000 does have to go out for bid, I do understand that. But I think with my understanding at the time of the urgency, and I do have backup to answer trustee Malvesto's questions, when we brought that to the board, you know, with two quotes, that you all had that, I felt that that was okay. So, and if I make a mistake, I can stand in front of all of you and say I made an error. So I just want to let the board know that.
Ms. O'Farrell, we got conflicting, we got conflicting information from the county. Initially, we got one set of directives, and Dale, correct me if I'm wrong, we subsequently got a different set of directives. We think the, the proper course of action was to follow the second course of directives, so that's where we're probably going to go with this. You just got caught in the middle.
So, that's really all I have until the discussion.
Thanks, Kim.
Thanks, Kim. Anything else, Jim? Okay. Don't your paternity's report? Nothing, nothing other than what you've opined on already. Township manager, Mr. Ream.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, just two brief items. October meeting schedule is the 14th and the 28th. And the beautification committee is looking for volunteers to help with their beautification projects at Four Corners. So if anyone is interested, please see myself from margin administration. And they, they obviously could use all the help they can get just on some general maintenance on some of their flower beds, et cetera. So, we would appreciate any input. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ream, it'll step down to my report. I'm going to start with the latest saga of the bridge and maybe trustee Bundy was there at the meeting with, with our Wayne County engineer, township manager was there. Everything you thought you knew about the repair project for the Grosse Hill Parkway Bridge? Well, we're starting from, we're, we're just starting over, and it's, it's very frustrating, it's, it's, it's just not encouraging. Okay, so, what you read in the Trenton Trib about there was no response, no one bid on the, on the, on the pier replacement, not entirely accurate, there was one bid, but it was, since it was outside the scope of what the county expected when it came in at over $15 million, the county referred to it as no response. It wasn't that they didn't get any bids, they didn't get any bid that fell within the scope of their anticipated operation. I think they were looking for a, a project in the four to five million dollar range. And I want to remind everyone, when we first started these conversations, the, the pier replacement was going to be done for under a million dollars, it was going to be done from below, from barge work. That isn't the case anymore, apparently. So the new approach, the superstructure, the steel, the section replacement, is currently, and this originally was considered Phase Two, but it's now Phase One or Phase One and Two. And we're, we're kind of chuckling on the outside, Jim, but inside, it's just a headache. Is currently scheduled to begin in May of 2020, okay, that's this spring, and it could possibly run through the first of October. There are days it will be, oh, the, part, as part of the bidding, the part of the contract, they mandate that it'll be open, the vehicle traffic, it will be open for vehicle traffic on Memorial Day weekend, Island Fest weekend, Fourth of July weekend, Labor Day weekend, and like the Trenton Jazz Fest and the Roar on the River, so they, they do mandate that it has to be open for vehicles. This is while the steel structure's being replaced. That, that is as of Friday.
Friday.
Okay, so, the piers, originally Phase One, and what most of us would think we would fix first, before we started fixing the structure on top of it, is now the second thing, and that will possibly be in May of 2021, possibly through the first of October of 2021. Again, everything is subject to change. Engineering estimates, I think he said about a $20 million for the total project. And I believe that included the West River Road overpass, that is currently thought to be repaired, replaced, whatever it is latest, the same time they're going to be doing the structural work on the bridge. This information is good as of Friday. I, it'll, when it changes, and I'm sure it will, you know, I'll let you know by every means available, and it's, it, this is an ongoing event. The Mesa Island Bridge, the contract has been let, and I, I can't be more candid. According to the, according to the county, we're waiting for you from the contractor, I spoke to the contractor today. He's waiting to hear from the county. So, it may start in October, we're waiting details. Again, when we find out what's going to happen there, we'll let you know. There's been no movement on the Park Lane Bridge, they're not willing to cough up the money for that bridge. And it turns out, many of the residents like it being closed because it eliminates the traffic in their, in their neighborhood. So they get, basically have a private drive, I don't know, you know, I don't know, that's, that's not going anywhere. Let's see, McLouth report, this is, comes up again and again as to what's going on there. And I'll just give you some high points. What's, what, what has happened so far? So disposal and/or reuse, type of waste, friable ACM, asbestos-containing materials, cumulative, 2,300 yards, Galvesta siding, 2,722 tons. Construction and demo debris, 9,796.4 tons. PCB transformers, 315.2 tons out of 49 transformers. Liquid waste, 1,823,799 gallons. Freon, 64 units drained, recycled, and then K61, 62 hazardous liquid solid wastes. Eight roll-off boxes, 44,000 gallons of liquid waste, 20 cubic yards of K62 solid waste. I could go read the air progress reports, generally none detected on the, whatever there were, eight or nine monitoring stations. They're, they're doing a good job, so, they have done a lot of work, they've got a lot of work to go. And I'm scheduled to go on a tour, uh, middle of next month, and I'll let you know what I see. Well, so last Thursday, the, my favorite charity, the, other than the firefighters golf outing, which was a good time, the, the weather was, was perfect, my knee still hurts because I can't hit a ball anywhere near as far as I used to. But the Kids Talk Advocacy Center through the Guidance Center, I briefed you on this before. It's where children who've been through just horrible abuse, and largely it's by their parents. They get their day in court in a protected environment. It's horrible that this has to happen, but this allows them, and this is funded through private charities, this one in particular. It's done in a, a safe, kind of nurturing home environment, where the questions, the interrogation is approved by both the prosecution and the defense. And the child is interviewed by, by an advocate, and again, in a, in a friendly, homey environment rather than a courtroom. It's all taped and it's admissible into court, rather than putting a child through another couple of days of absolute horror to go on top of the horror they've already been put through. So, anyway, they raised $120,000, Grosse Hill, well represented. It was like, uh, it was just like being home, you know, just seeing, seeing everybody at Kroger's. So, thank you for my fellow residents who supported this. Uh, helps me sleep a little bit better at night. And again, Chief Murdock with the Coast Guard visit, great fun, these kids, and I call them kids, the oldest one was 27. They're, they're inspirational, they love their jobs, and they're just, they're, they're, they're impressive. And they're young enough that they could pull me out of the ice probably. But we had a great time showing them around our capabilities and I saw some of their capabilities just shortly previous to that, so. That'll conclude my report, I've been busy, and looks like I'm going to stay busy. With that, we go into discussion items. Oh, I'm sorry, Angela, you, you know, you wear your glasses and I don't recognize you. Of course you can, you're supposed to wave your hand, come up first, or I'll let you, you know what? I'll let you bring the good news and leave us all feeling better.
Right, I'm going to take a page here out of
Angela Secocca, DDA Director, welcome.
So, we have Paint the Town Red returning again this year, coming up fast. It is not going to be the same as last year, and last year was not the same as the year before. We're going to change it up every year, I think. This year Kiwanis, I'm pleased, is playing a big role in that just
Happy year, yeah.
So basically, Friday, October 4th, starting at 4 o'clock and running until 7:30, we're going to have the Homecoming Parade, a pep rally of sorts. And the Class of 2020 is going to run a tailgate fundraiser. Taco truck and the coffee truck will be back, and just a whole host of things going on at the business level. They'll be decorating businesses and handing, doing handouts. And then on Saturday, we're bringing back the vendor marketplace that was really great last year. Hopefully, the weather cooperates, it looks like it may this year. We have about 15 vendors showing up at this point, and if you're interested in becoming a vendor, the information's on GI Connect and on both Facebook pages, as well as you can contact me at angela s@grossill.com. Also on Saturday, the Kiwanis is running a scavenger hunt and the first 100 registrants will get a free T-shirt, and it's designed to be island-wide, so geared toward kids, but anyone can participate. Saturday, during the market, we will also have bounce houses, a recreation selfie station, face paint, the Kiwanis scavenger hunt, and entertainment, we're going to have our very own Barry Van England and Mirror Image will both be entertaining that day. So please come out and enjoy. A few other things, McComb Mileers will start at noon on October 7th. Every Monday, we're going to invite anyone who feels like coming out and enjoying a little bit of sunshine and walking the mile-long stretch that is McComb Street. And if you can't make it at noon, we'll have signs up gearing everyone toward certain markers throughout, and you can create your own path. We do have an RFQ out there, the deadline was Friday, we do have four bids in that we'll be reviewing. And so in October, we'll be bringing some more information to the board on that. And we had recently had some concerns because some of the lampposts were out. We just replaced 12 of them, so McComb Street is lit again, so.
Angela, I missed, what were, what were your bids out for?
We have an RFQ for McComb Street design enhancements, and we're looking at like a phased-in process to take place over the next several years, probably three to five years. But it will, we put out an RFQ so that we could get an idea of what we were looking at, and then go from there. Thank you.
Thanks, Angela. I will never forget you again. Okay. Let's move to discussion items, Chief.
In your packet is a, I put in as a discussion item, AEDs, automatic defibrillators. It looks more like a, an action item than it does a discussion item, but there's, there was kind of a reason for it, and I did discuss this with Brian, he thought it should be an action item. But what has happened is, we have AEDs through the schools, the country clubs, the fire department, we use AEDs, the cops use AEDs, so they're all interchangeable. In other words, the pads we use are interchangeable. What has happened is physio control was bought out by Stryker. Stryker's a large, you know, product maker for the health industry. So what has happened is the LifePak 500s that are out there right now have been pulled off by the market. They're not pulled off yet, they're going to be pulled off by the end of February because parts and service are no longer going to be taking place with them. So we have about 14 of them out in the field. I have AEDs in the churches, the school, everywhere, and they all match. So this is also a single-source situation with physio control. This $19,000 that you see as an expenditure, expenditure, I wanted to discuss with you just to, due to the fact that that's not our entire expense. So the schools, the schools right now have already sent me a check for almost $11,000 to replace the ones they have in their school. We have two at the church, Catholic church that we have to replace. We have all of them within the township facilities that need to be replaced. So the, the actual number actually went up by one because the Catholic church wanted to buy one more and so did the school. So the price actually went over $20,000. But our total expense is approximately $6,000 for our, for what we're going to be putting in. That could even come down lower because we're working on a, a grant from Beaumont and a grant from Henry Ford Wyandotte because Grosse Hill, Grosse Hill Fire Department's going to LifePak 15s, which is cardio where we can send telemetry to the hospitals on cardiac events. That will free up possibly two I already have in service, newer ones. So the 500s got to come out of service, and we're putting in CR2s into service right now. What's nice about these units, I have to go to the schools every year and inspect them, make sure the pads are up to date, the batteries are operational, they're serviceable, kids haven't tampered with them, all that kind of stuff. These particular units right now are going to be in a alarmed case in the schools, which they are right now. But I can monitor these, these new pieces of equipment from my desktop. They're all, they're all Wi-Fi, so I can just pull them up on my desk and say, yep, it's operational, yes, it's operational. Saves on a little time, a little manpower. But I just wanted to discuss this with you because it looks like a big expense, but it's, it's spread out through a bunch of the churches, the, our department's schools. So it's, right now, it's right around 60, 63 on our half. If I don't get the grants coming in quick enough and I need to replace some, I'll have to buy two. But it's, I got to update them, especially in the schools, because I don't want any failures in the schools whatsoever, or anywhere. I don't want them anywhere. So this is definitely a, more of a discussion item. I, I don't want to tell you I'm doing it, but it's a single source and I have to do it, so.
Chief, you know, you indicate in here that the country club and Sacred Heart have
They're paying for theirs.
That's, that's fine. What about the other churches, what about the other clubs?
I have newer models. There, the Lutheran Church, the Episcopal Church, all those churches have a newer model, they have a CR model. They have them.
They all
The only church that we don't have one that the fire department takes care of is the church across the street from Public Safety. But what I did when I put this, this project in, into play 15 years ago, I tried to keep all the country clubs, all the yacht clubs, everybody the same. So when we pull up, I can leave their machine there and plug my machine in without taking the pads off the patient. So, and it, it just made it a more fluid situation than, that, doing it that way than having multiple units all over the place. And if you notice in your packet, they all run pretty close in price. They're all in that middle 15, $1,700 price range. So, but we've gone with physio control, they're, they're, they're a well-known unit, so. So I just want to let you know I'm moving forward.
There's one at West Shore as well, that West Shore bought. There's one at West Shore as well, that West Shore bought.
No.
They have one.
They have one, but we don't service it. They got, they have a, I can't tell them what to buy. They chose to go another route. I service what we purchased through our department and put into service. I service those. I won't service something somebody else buys.
Chief, the AEDs, that also gives you communication with the hospital as well, correct?
The two grant ones that we're getting from the, possibly, we're possibly getting two from Wyandotte, but we've talked to both hospitals, and there's a possibility of getting one from each. Those units are expensive. They're thirty thousand dollars apiece, those AEDs, because of the telemetry and all that. So they're an all-in-one unit. They take blood pressure, they do everything. They stay on the ambulance. Yeah, they stay with the patient when we go to the hospital, so.
Chief, do you have any data on how often they get used in the churches and schools?
I don't have that in front of me, but we do have data on that. In fact, we're required under HEMS, which is our third-party control unit for all, the entire Down River, Wayne County, and we're required by their rules to support that, I think, quarterly on how many times we activate our AEDs and we have a cardiac event.
Well, I would just say you were, you know, being cautious about the expense, but if I'm not mistaken, there's a childcare on the island that advertises, you know, it's not expensive, it's priceless. If you can save a life with one of these, that's not expensive, that's priceless.
It's like all the emergency equipment that police and fire have. You know, stuff's expensive, and, you know, it's an insurance policy. It's exactly what it is. And it's whatever, whatever police touch, or particularly whatever, from my end, whatever fire department purchases, it don't start at a thousand dollars. It starts higher. So it's very expensive.
But I'm glad that, you know, again, it's nice for the public to know too where our resources are going.
Yeah.
And it's good to know that these are in all the facilities that we all use.
Yeah, they're all in township facilities and throughout the community where the churches and the clubs are willing to, you know, even if they don't have the ones that we recommend, they have one in service. So it's, the yacht clubs have them, they all have them. So it's a good thing.
Any other, excuse me, discussion among the board on the potential AED purchase?
Now, can these be moved to action if the board so desires?
Absolutely.
I would like to make a motion to.
You're right, Brian.
How much? No, I'm kidding. I would like to make a motion that, oh.
Yeah, okay, we'll add it, but then I'm going to open up to public comment on this, on this action item.
Well, again, that will be discussion then as well. So I'd like to make the motion that as recommended by the Grosiel Fire Commission and Fire Chief to replace current AEDs, Automatic External Defibrillators, by Stryker. Total price, nineteen thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents.
Support.
Okay, moved by the clerk, seconded by trustee Budde. And I think we've got most of the background. Discussion among the board.
Just to clarify, that price could be a little higher because there was a couple more added at the last minute.
Okay, since we offered no public comment on this, it is now an action item. Mr. Sabat.
I'd ask you a couple of questions.
But you can come up.
You got to come to the mic and, you know, you know the drill.
Got to come up.
Got to come to the microphone and identify yourself.
Can a resident of Grosiel pay you, give you a check, and you secure one for them?
For you personally?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can you give us your name and address for the record?
My name is John Sabat. I'm from West River Road, and I think most of everybody here knows me, right, Brian? But anyway, we have units ourselves. And the one you're talking about that has the blood pressure and everything, I can get those for about thirty-five hundred dollars, four thousand.
Not the LifePak 15s?
No, not the LifePak 15s, no. I'm only familiar with it because I deal with customers that carry those products. But anyway, I think maybe the whole island should be notified if they want to purchase. Maybe that could lower his acquisition cost on quantity. And as far as the pads, you have from Stryker. Can you get extra pads and have them so you don't have to put them out of commission until they're?
We're careful, we're extremely careful on how we purchase batteries and pads. There's a life, there's a born-on-date on all this stuff. And a battery for our current AEDs, probably close to four hundred dollars a battery. So it's not, it's not something you just, you put six on the shelf and then all of a sudden you got to throw them away. It's just, we get them in about three or four days, but it's not something that I'm going to stock and maintain.
No, I was talking about the pads, not the batteries.
The pads are the same thing. And the pads run, they're, child pads, pediatric pads run close to a hundred dollars a set. Adults, about forty, so.
And they have a shelf life as well?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think every home should have one, especially a lot of us on the board here.
Just one last thing. You made mention about getting a unit for thirty-five hundred bucks. The LifePak 15 is utilized countywide and in all the hospitals. So it has, it has matchup, so, and that's critical, so.
Okay, other discussion among the board on the potential purchase. Well, let's see. With that, those in favor of following the recommendation of the Fire Commission and the Fire Chief to replace current AEDs, Automatic External Distributor by Stryker at a total price of nineteen thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None offered? That was easy, good.
Well, if, Chief, if the price goes over, do we have to amend the motion? Or can we, is there something we need to do with the motion to give you the space to go over?
I think we have the space to go over, just due to the fact that it's a single-source vendor. There's nothing to go out to bid for, so it's just, we have a set price in that bid packet. It's fifteen hundred, one-five-seven-six something, and it's already a fixed number. So if they go over, it's the same price, so.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, everyone. Okay, discussion item number two. The repair to the Sunrise Park Drain and leveling out the, and, yeah, nineteen oh-three-three, level out the recreation area land, otherwise known as the sled hill. Who wants to take the lead on that?
O'Farrell.
Ms. O'Farrell, welcome back.
Thank you. I'm here for discussion.
So my take on this is we were originally under the impression, and we had guidance from Wayne County saying that this was a time-critical event, and that we were not required to go out for bids. That was what we went into this with. Am I correct in that, Mr. Ream? Reasonably correct?
Reasonably correct.
If I could add some comments.
I was hoping you would, because you were the one who tracks all the documents on this, so.
This is a Wayne County Recreation Grant, which is something that we receive every, is it a three-year cycle, I believe?
No.
Okay.
Three months.
And when we were contacted. When we were contacted by the Administration Office from Wayne County, we were led to believe that this was a time-sensitive issue, and we were concerned about the bidding process, and we were concerned about the budget. So when we spoke to Administration, we asked about bids versus quotes, or, excuse me, you just made me do the same thing. We asked the difference. What were their requirements at Wayne County? A bid is just that, it's advertised. A quote is, you ask for some prices. So Wayne County Administration said, it's totally up to you however you want to handle it. So with the time sensitivity, we received quotes, and we reported that to the Township Board. And I wanted to make, I wanted to make sure, I did double-check that. We did identify we received quotes, not bids. So in the meantime, we did receive contact from Wayne County Recreation. And Wayne County Parks and Recreation is the actual department that administers this. And they said, absolutely not, we will require bids. So last Thursday, as a matter of fact, I received the intergovernmental agreement from Wayne County, and their deadline is next September, not this September. So they are now stretching the whole award out, so we have plenty of time to do bids. A couple of things that, I guess, helped. It was originally a fifty thousand dollar project, which we knew we couldn't afford to do a quote with the township engineer, but now they're awarding us sixty thousand dollars. So we can still proceed, and we'll see what kind of monies are available in relationship to this, as well as also try to do the second phase of the park improvement, which is the drain improvement. I know some of the board members were concerned that that was a Wayne County maintenance issue, and it is. But we're trying to partner with them to get something accomplished. So I don't, I'm going to guess with bidding, we probably won't have enough funds to do both of them. So, but in the meantime, I know, I don't want to speak for Mr. Nelson or Kim. The CRC put together a layout plan for the parks, and they're still working with the community groups on the final layout of those. So I guess, simply put, I would request that you rescind those awards, and we'll go through that process and have the engineer involved. Because what I'm afraid of is, whether it's a year down the road, or a month, or two years, Wayne County comes through, they decide they want to pull an audit and go, you didn't bid, you only quoted. And I don't want to put us or the county in that situation. And we move forward based upon the timeframe that was communicated to us by the Administration Office.
Oh, I just want to ask Mr. Assorti, if the board so decides, how do we go about rescinding these motions? These action items from two meetings, from two meetings ago?
Well, they were approvals, so you can rescind the approval. You just make a motion the way you normally would. It doesn't require a roll-call vote unless, unless what you voted on required a roll-call vote. But otherwise, you can just make a motion to rescind it, just like if you were to have a contract, you know, lay X number of yards of concrete, you could rescind that authorization entered in the contract.
Thank you.
Okay, with that.
Question, though.
Oh, Mr. Malvesto.
I thought I saw some work taking place at the, at the end of Parkway and East River. So was the drain work completed?
Oh, sir.
Oh, I thought, I saw a piece of excavation equipment there, and it was digging, so I just kind of thought that it had been started. All right, okay, I just, I say, I saw the equipment there, and I just, that's why I wouldn't have even brought that up. But I understand that, I'm going to say Kim, okay? That you and your commission went over this, this, you know, the plan to level the hill of dirt. And I respect what you did and your reasoning. If you wanted to just move that pile of dirt fifteen feet in any one direction, and that was your commission's choice, that's fine. It was, during the discussion, the initial discussion, when we voted on that, was, the term bid kept coming up. And in fact, it was, all it was, was a request for a quote to move a pile of dirt. A request for a quote to change a drain line, all right? That was, you know, when it became, when I found out that it was not an actual bid package that went out, it was just a matter of a phone call saying how much to move this pile of dirt. Now I start questioning as to whether we're following our policies and procedures when it comes to spending money. But that was, you know, that goes back, you know, a couple of months ago, right? I mean, what you have found out since then, it changes the story. But again, at no time did I ever doubt you and your commission's project. My main concern at the time, and I brought it up, was that without any kind of an engineering study, and if we just simply level a pile of, you know, this, this big, I have no idea how many cubic yards of material are there. If we just simply spread it out on the ground, that we would create, that the potential of creating drainage issues for surrounding, be it the cemetery, be it the house on the corner, be it the storage. You know, just moving that dirt and putting it, you know, spreading it out, I didn't want to create additional problems. And that's why I asked about engineering. But, no, you know, since you found out, you know, things are different, you've got more time to work with this, it would be nice just to, you know, to have a real bid so that no time in the future can somebody question how that money, how that contract was let out and how that money was being spent. So it's.
Right, absolutely, and that's what we're planning to do.
I think we're at where we should be.
Right.
And again, since, you know, it's been a while, you've just recently found out, things have changed. In fact, you find out you're going to get, you're going to get another ten thousand dollars. As long as it fulfills what your, you know, what your intentions are, you know, ballparks, additional soccer fields, that's up to you and your commission. So I never, again, I never doubted you and your, and the process that you were following. So please take that as, because we've had, we've had this conversation, like.
Just to be clear, though, the legislation that you submitted to the board initially, all the documentation says quotes, it says proposals, and nothing pretended that it was a bid. We may have used the words interchangeably, but the actual documentation makes it clear that these were, that these were not official bids. This was not a bid opening, it was not publicized, and I think that was clear.
Any other discussion, or we can introduce a motion?
Let's introduce.
Okay, let's introduce a motion. I move that the Grosiel Township Board of Trustees rescind action item nineteen dash zero-three-two, the Wayne County Drain, and action item nineteen dash zero-three-three, the sled hill removal. Thank Carl was first. So, so moved by the supervisor, seconded by trustee Bletcher. Any need for further discussion? Apparently, we're in agreement this is the right thing to do. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None offered? Those motions stand rescinded, and we'll get back to work on these projects.
I would just like to ask Dale and Kim too. Obviously, working your way through the process, this would have all eventually come to the board anyway, right? Because even though we approved the motion, you would have realized that you couldn't move forward with it, and we would have ultimately had to go back and revisit the issue. So the process works.
Well, and, and, go ahead, Dale, answer that.
This grant is something that Kim's new to, and I've only touched one once. So I definitely would want to say, yes, we would have discovered that throughout the process. But that doesn't mean that Wayne County wouldn't have been friendly to us. And that's by no means, when I went through that documentation the other day, and after the communications with their Recreation Division, it's not worth a chance. We've been out front, open, but we don't have the time constraint, so we need to take a step.
Dale, I'd like to thank you and Kim for your due diligence in pursuing and going through this. Thank you very much. Okay, again, moving on. With that, that concludes our discussion items. Open to public comment. Mrs. Budde.
Hey, Brian, you're not supposed to surprise me like that.
Budde, eight oh one eight Burning Bush. Good evening. I was not asked by any board member to come and make statements. I would like to state, though, that on Monday, September ninth, when I attended what I thought was one of the most shameful board meetings I've seen in some time, in spite of a room full of citizens opposing an action to remove Mr. Robert Celestino and Mr. Michael Jurecki from the Police Commission, and in spite of weak and questionable evidence given by trustee Bletcher, five more board members pushed this hypocritical plan through. Let's flashback to 2010. Supervisor Loftus, trustee O'Connor, and trustee Van Oes sat on a board who planned to vote on an action to place unwanted sidewalks in my neighborhood and other neighborhoods, under the banner of Safe Routes to School. Why am I bringing this old history up? Because just as on September ninth, this room was packed with concerned citizens, the majority of whom. the majority of whom were opposed to the sidewalks. In similar autocratic fashion, that board ignored public outcry and voted for installation of sidewalks because the board members determined it was the best for the community. I had hoped over the years that these three board members would have learned from the resentment that arose from passing that initiative. What affected residents the most was watching our elected officials shirk the responsibility to act according to the wishes of their constituents. Evidently, this bit of history is long forgotten. Not only at the September ninth meeting, but in several meetings throughout the year, I have observed a definite lack of transparency in dealing with township issues, a dismissive attitude toward tabling actions for further discussion, and a definite arrogance to those who criticize or disagree with the band of five. Yes, Mr. Bleacher, Mr. Nelson, you have fallen right in step. Mr. Bleacher, your push to blacken the character in many years of service given by Mr. Zalesko and Mr. Jurecki show how you failed those who elected you. I am sorry you could not put personal differences aside or be open to mediation. I found it interesting that those who felt, quote, "That they were treated like a dog", did not speak in support of your action. In closing, Mr. Bleacher, Ms. O'Connor, you stated many times that commissions serve at the pleasure of the board. Let me also remind the board that they serve at the pleasure of the constituents. And our displeasure with your behavior in that vote, I feel, will definitely be shown at the next election. Until then, I wish to thank Mr. Zalesko, Mr. Jurecki, for their service, their dedication, and I offer my apology for the way they were treated by five members of this board. Thank you.
Public comment?
I stand by the comments that I made at the last meeting. I stand by the record that I recited. It wasn't just a difference of opinions. I recited a series of incidents and facts, and I stand by those.
Thank you, Mr. Bleacher. Mr. Jurecki?
Okay, thank you. During the September ninth Board of Trustees...
Mike Jurecki, address?
Good. During the September ninth Board of Trustees meeting, statements were made by trustee Bleacher regarding the justification for the dismissal of Commissioners Robert Zalesko and myself. Although these statements were not contained in the packet to the board prior to the meeting for review, Mr. Bleacher chose to introduce them for the first time during the meeting. Many found these statements misleading, as well as questionable to their accuracy and validity. Since we are now not allowed equal time to respond to Mr. Bleacher's statements, we can only address a few of them. One, Mr. Bleacher chose to give an interpretation of the rules and guidelines for the Volunteer Service Agreement slash Insurance Waiver given to the dear callers on January eighth, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Bleacher is not the authority on the subject, as he himself stated during the July two thousand nineteen Police Commission meeting, where Mr. Bleacher failed to answer questions regarding the subject and stated that this was not his area of expertise. The Workers' Compensation Division of the Michigan State Board is the authority. In accordance with Mr. Carmazin's and Mr. Porciarelli's communication with the representatives of the Michigan State Board, these two gentlemen were informed that the dear callers were covered for workman's compensation, and anyone stating different should contact the Michigan State Board to get the facts right. Any interpretation of the rules and guidelines by anyone other than the Workers' Compensation Division of the Michigan State Board is nothing more than opinion. The question of whether or not the callers were covered with minimal compensation is not a mystery anymore. Let us make this clear, once and for all, they were covered, as stated by the ruling authority of the Michigan State Board. Number two, Mr. Bleacher stated that the commission did not have the authority to hear the grievance submitted by the Police Officers Union on May two thousand seventeen. In accordance with the agreement practice, according with the agreement practice between the Township of Grozeal and the Grozeal Police Officers Association, as stated in booklet form and given to all members of the Police Commission, Article twenty-five point five clearly states that if the union is not satisfied with the answer to a grievance, the grievance shall be submitted to the Police Commission by the chief within seven calendar days. The Police Commission will hear the grievance at its regular meeting. The Police Commission will answer the grievance in writing within ten calendar days of the hearing. The book of agreement containing Article twenty-five point five was ratified and executed on the twenty-fifth day of April twelfth, and signed by Township Supervisor Brian Loftus. Mr. Bleacher then stated that myself...
Your three minutes and fifteen seconds, we're not gonna rehash this again. The Circuit Court decided that the commission approving the grievance was moot. They dismissed the case. It's not debatable anymore, the court's agreed with the township.
Yeah, can we continue on here, or can someone continue, because...
I'll give Mr. Zalesko three minutes.
Bob Zalesko, Blauvelt. Mr. Bleacher then stated that Mr. Jurecki and Mr. Zalesko were responsible for some one hundred thousand dollars spent in legal fees by the township. Mr. Bleacher failed to mention that the judge ruled in favor of the commission's authority to hear this grievance, Brian.
A different judge, don't correct me, that was an administrative law judge.
It was, but it stands.
You know what, we're into, we rely on the opinion of our township attorney and our labor attorney.
Yeah, okay. You said last time here, and I remember your statement, what counts is what comes out of the court. This came out of the court. You said that right here during the last meeting.
And Circuit Court trumps the administrative law judge?
No. Therefore, Mr. Bleacher's... Mr. Bleacher commented that the township manager wanted to be present at the meeting regarding the grievance. If the township manager wanted to attend the meeting or have the meetings rescheduled, he should have communicated this request via correspondence to the commission prior to the meeting. Number three, Mr. Bleacher commented on the commission's challenge to the board regarding violation of Police Department promotion policy. The approval of the chief of police was made by the board in September two thousand eighteen with no input from the commission. In fact, the commission was completely bypassed in the decision-making process. It is true that the board has the authority to overrule the commission's decision, but to completely bypass the commission without hearing their decision is not only disrespectful and unprofessional, but most importantly violates the Grozeal Police Department promotion policy approved by the township. In accordance with Chapter sixty-seven, Article three, Police Commission's Under sixty-seven ten, the duties, it states that the Police Commission has delegated the authority to hire personnel for available positions with an organizational structure of the Township Police Department, provided, however, that the appointment or promotion of all officers of the Township Police Department above the rank of sergeant shall be the township, shall be by the Township Board after recommendation thereon has been received by the Township Police Commission. Unfortunately, this did not happen. Instead, Mr. Bleacher stated that Rome was burning, and the decision of replacing the chief had to be made by the board immediately. There was no justification for this action to bypass the commission. The commission offered and could have provided their decision to the board within a few days. The board voted, excuse me, the board voted on this action prior to receiving the commission's decision. Number four, Mr. Bleacher commented on an email dated July twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, regarding a request by a commission representative to Mr. Bleacher asking him to again complete an assignment he had accepted in a commission meeting six months prior. The assignment was to establish a communication with the township manager to acquire answers that were again asked by the public during the July twenty-nineteenth Police Commission meeting regarding the two thousand nineteen deer call. A request to immediately coordinate this assignment was then endorsed by trustee Nelson, who was present at the meeting. This assignment was never completed. The commission simply requested Mr. Bleacher, our liaison, to seek answers from the township manager regarding questions presented by the public at the July twenty-nineteenth commission meeting. Fifth, Mr. Bleacher stated Commissioners Jurecki and Zalesko, during the August twenty-nineteenth Police Commission meeting, savaged those responsible for taking and presenting the meeting minutes. These meeting minutes were...
Hey, Mr. Zalesko, you're four minutes into, and I gave you extra time because of my previous interruption, but your time has expired, do you want to pass on to somebody else to continue there?
Oh, certainly, this is important.
By all means.
Come on, Joey. Right here, these comments, and then flip.
Joe Porciarelli, seven eight thirty-two, Oak River. "These meeting minutes were not accepted because they were incomplete. Mr. Zalesko later asked Mr. Longton, who was responsible for taking the meeting minutes, if he viewed the commissioners' actions as savage attack on his character. He replied in a humorous fashion, 'No way.' Again, Mr. Bleacher chose to give a misleading description regarding these minutes that just happened to contain the correct action plan endorsed by trustee Nelson that he never completed. In conclusion, during his presentation, Mr. Bleacher failed to mention that in September of two thousand eighteen, after leading the action to bypass the commission on the appointment of the new chief of police, Mr. Bleacher was asked by all members of the Police Commission to leave his post as liaison for his dereliction of duty to represent decisions of the Police Commission and abide by township ordinance as it pertains to the Police Commission. Mr. Bleacher has fabricated a list of accusations and attempted to justify his actions to dismiss two commissioners. This disturbing precedent that this behavior sets is that a mere difference of opinion with influential members of the board will lead to dismissal from a commission. This incident reminds all of us how important it becomes to empower the right of candidates when we go to the polls, qualified candidates who will bring back the integrity and leadership so badly needed to move Grozeal into the future."
A question for the three of you, who is the author of that document? Don't shake, you can shake your head if you want, I'm sorry, I have no position, just who is the author of that? Okay.
I got just a second.
You have a minute and a half left, chief.
I just want to thank somebody for something. Mike, I wanted to thank him, I was trying to find paperwork from the Army Corps of Engineers meeting, and they have it now on a disk, if you want to go to Wind Out Library, but it's hundreds and thousands of pages through there. Mike had what I needed, he got it to me within a few days, and there was one section on there that said, "Go to section," I forget whatever, it said one seventy-two or something. I notified Mike again, he had it to me, I mean, it was like in half hour. So, I just appreciate it, it was just so helpful, I'm not the best on a computer.
I've been through the documents a few times.
Well, yeah, but thank you, no, I'm not the greatest on a computer, and he kind of guided me through there, but he was able to get me. But I think that, you know, a lot of times, you have, you know, individuals, like somebody mentioned something about people coming up, I think, Jim, they weren't real happy at, was it the DPS department, or, you know? But sometimes you don't hear the good, you know? But thank you, I appreciate it, it saved me, it saved me hours and hours at Wind Out Library, believe me. Thank you again.
Thanks, chief.
Mr. Supervisor, since when is it appropriate to question people who come up during public comment as to who authored a document?
I'd like to know, I'd like to know. It was a prepared script.
I mean, was there an alterian, what, did you plan on using this?
Tom, you asked me a question, I'm trying to answer it, I'd like to know, that's all. If they all, if they work together on it, fine, now I know.
Is, but was there a purpose behind it?
I wanted to know.
And they wanted to comment?
Yep, and they, and they did, and they're done. And now it's open for somebody else. Mr. Snyder?
Eighty-four forty-eight Rucker. As many of the board members were at the Police Commission meeting on August twentieth, I'd have to disagree with Mrs. Budney, where she thought that was the worst meeting that she could possibly have been to, it's because she did not show up at that meeting. At that meeting, at the twenty-fourth minute, Mrs. O'Connor had asked the chief, in order to have proper documentation, can we put the documentation for the paperwork for the insurance into the file? So, at that point, our chief had mentioned that all of that was done by a verbal contract, which reminded me back when I was in college, our jurisprudence professor made it very clear that a verbal contract is as good as paper is written on. With that being said, the attorneys for insurance company can, no offense, Mr. Assorti, but the attorneys at the insurance company have far more ability to pay for a better law, and will have far more money to fight a contract such as that. So, as far as the deer call, it's amazing to me that folks who are out to try to blame somebody for a deer call aren't looking at the big picture, which is a verbal contract is not a binding contract as far as insurance. As far as any other thing, as far as reimbursement, there's a difference between reimbursement and payment, and I hope folks out in the audience will realize that as well. And as far as the rest of it, for those of you who have come up and have been angered by the board and how they've acted, I wish you could have been there, or if you want to actually see what the Police Commission was on August twentieth, I, by law, made an announcement at that meeting that I was going to tape that meeting. I have that on my phone. I have purposely not given this to anybody, because I do not want anything from that meeting to be misconstrued. I still have that on my phone. I live eight four four eight Rucker, if somebody wants to see what that meeting is and why the board has acted the way it is, I'll be happy to show them, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Snyder. Other public comment tonight? You only get one, Mr. Budney. Okay, let the record stand corrected, she was referring to the September ninth board meeting, not the Police Commission meeting. Mr. Carmazin?
Greg Carmazin, I'm speaking on behalf, as a member of the board of the Grozeal Civic Association.
But you're, we want your address, we know you live in Clinton, was it Chesterfield Township? It's no, there's no restriction on that, just we want an address.
Sure. I live in Clinton Township, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Carmazin, go ahead, I'll start you over.
You know, it's interesting that Mr. Snyder had mentioned that he had a video of the Police Commission meeting in August, that for some reason he doesn't want to present to the public, but I would certainly offer to him that the Grozeal Civic Association will be glad to put that on our YouTube channel, because I think he's actually correct, that it would be very instructive and informative to the community if everyone was able to see the totality of that meeting. I think you would see that there were some substantial, substantial problems with the way this whole matter's been discussed and handled. A couple of other things I wanted to respond to, in particular, Mr. Snyder said, he was talking about the difference between reimbursement and compensation. Well, I suggest that you have a discussion with the Michigan Workers' Compensation Agency about this, because if you did, and you talked to the compliance director, you would find, you would be told clearly that in-kind compensation is compensation for purposes of workers' compensation, okay? So, there really is no issue about that. I think that this has been documented, that the deer call hunters were in fact given compensation. And if you talk to the state about this, the top state authority, it would be clear that they were compensated, and that is sufficient for purposes of workers' comp. And an insurance company giving you guidance about this is fine, but if there's a question about it, you go to the state, which is the top authority, and that, you know, as the township manager mentioned during the last board meeting, was not done. One other point I wanted to make, there was a discussion at that Police Commission meeting in August... in August about the minutes that Commissioner Jurecki had objected to. There was a, there was language in the minutes that had been removed that discussed the commitment of the township board liaison to organize a meeting with the manager and other appropriate officials to talk about how to move forward on, on the deer call that was to come up. That meeting was never held, and that was Mr. Jurecki's objection, that that, that commitment, which was actually a decision of the commission, was not reflected in the minutes. And I'd point out that it was a decision. I was at that meeting. I watched it. It was a decision of the board of the commission. It wasn't recorded as a vote, but it was definitely a decision, and it is entirely appropriate that that is included in the minutes. And I would respectfully remind the clerk that if you have any, any question about what the authority is of a board to include in their minutes, you should consult with the Michigan Attorney General's Guidance on Open Meeting Acts because it is clear in the guidance of the Michigan Attorney General's Guidance on, on Open Meeting Act that a public body does have the authority to provide more in their minutes than the minimum requirement. And you were talking about the minimum requirement, which would be a vote, but this was clearly a discussion that was tantamount to a decision, and that was appropriate to have reflected in the minutes. Finally, and this is-
Hey, you're three, you're approaching four minutes, so-
This is just the final comment. I was, I was called by the Detroit Free Press reporter, Emma Keith, today about the deer call. She said that she had called the township for comment. I don't know particularly what officials she tried to reach, but she said that the township would not provide comment. I think you should.
That's untrue.
I think you should provide comments through Free Press.
She contacted the manager. The manager said, "I'm not the one to talk to. The supervisor's right next door." He passed her off to me via an email. I responded, gave her my phone number, never heard from her again.
Okay.
So we did try, we did want to contact.
I suspect you're going to hear from her. So, and I would hope you do because apparently you were able to contact Channel Four News to, to put out your-
He contacted, he contacted us. I did not contact him.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carmazin. Other public comment? Mr. Sabat?
I suspect that, my name is John Sabat, West River Road. We had a conversation today, Mr. Supervisor, regarding the various subjects that I wanted to get on agenda on September thirteenth. At two-twenty-three PM, I sent you an email to be put on the agenda, and we decided together that we, I would do this on the public comment. But I just wanted to pass this. Thank you, Brian. Some pictures of why. I've been talking to Derek Thiel, and he has an idea, but I just wanted everybody to know here that the township going forward really needs to concentrate on giving permits. This picture you see here shows why that driveway was put in there. The owner put it on the north side of the property. That way, all the water stays north of his property and not in front of his property. So all the neighbors and the new neighbors are punished, and he is the punishment. What I'm trying to get at here is Derek's trying to help me with some ideas and also with the, Derek Thiel, sorry, Derek, with the grants and all that, but the point here is we should not allow permits to be given to people without proper execution of drainage since we have so many problems with drainage on this island. And how would you like to have that in front of your house? You can see three mallard ducks there. Maybe one of the hunters will think that's Lake Erie Junior and start shooting them. It's embarrassing, very dangerous, very unhealthy to have those lakes in front of your house. And this goes to the other issue. Dale and Mr. Derek Thiel is again trying to help us out with the West River Road and the Loma Court Black Road situation. Maybe you can lend some hand to him on this situation because, you know, I don't know if you've had meetings or not, but maybe you should let him know what's going on and what you committed to with Lorinda at the time you met with Mrs. Denman. You know, you've got to back up your word and stand tough. The other issue I spoke to Mr. Loftus is regarding the situation with McCloud. I had some ideas. I bounced them off of him. He said he was going to talk to, you said you were going to talk to the cities, and you also said you were going to present to the council or something about creating a committee where we can do something about trying to make it easy on Crown to give up that property and turn it into a profit center. I'm not saying to turn it into a park, turn it into a profit center for all the communities around here. We might be limited on what we can say because it's not located on our property, but Mr. Carmazin, who is an expert on this, can probably shed some light on the possibilities and options we can do. And there is grants out there that we can secure to acquire this property. It's not too late. To sit, to sit in those chairs there and not do anything, it's too late.
Going a little long, but we get your point.
Well, that's okay. You didn't, you didn't respond to my agenda request two weeks ago, so I'm not trying to start an argument with you. I'm just letting you know. We had an agenda request, and I did it in proper time, and you forgot about it. It's that simple.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sabat.
Okay, you're welcome. But anyway, so I'm trying-
You're three minutes and forty-five seconds.
Well, it might be, let me ask you a question that-
Oh, closing comments.
My closing comment is, my closing comment is, why didn't you respond then on September thirteenth at two-twenty-three?
It was a miscommunication between myself and the deputy clerk.
So that means I get, that means I get punished?
It was, it was my mistake.
So make it right. Allow me two more minutes. Thank you. Is that okay with the, with the trustees? Allow me two minutes since you forgot to respond.
No, use my, my, my authority as a moderator. You have a minute. Go.
Thank you. So I'm asking the trustees here, I'm asking the township elected team here to do something about this McCloud-Thiel situation. Okay? Just like Mr. Derek Thiel here stepping up and trying to do something about some issues that should have been handled ten, eleven years ago, I think you should step up and support Mr. Loftus here about creating some kind of council and doing something. Did we not discuss that?
We discussed that. I didn't agree to formal, I said I would contact the neighboring mayors-
Right.
And see what, and get their thoughts on it.
Well, maybe you should get the team to support you. Okay? That's all I wanted to say. Thank you, everybody.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Sabat.
The city of Grozeal, Township of Grozeal should really be awakened and do something about this because, long-term, you're going to pay the price.
Can I ask Mr. Sabat a question?
You may.
Mr. Sabat? Just, I just briefed through these pictures that you, you know, provided for us. They're not date stamped. Can you, can you tell me when those pictures were taken?
Last week.
Okay, because it's not clear. I just, I know it's been a relatively dry, the last half of the summer's been relatively dry, so I don't know where the, but I do look at the level of the water, and if I look at, if I look at the river and I look at, and I look at these, you know, this flooded area here, to my eye, it appears to be very much the same. And so how much, I guess a question I would have and perhaps Derek would, would know, how much of this water is just due to the, to our high water level this summer?
In that area, that's a good question. That area is not because of the lake being high. That area, he'll, he'll back it up, is from the drainage, from all the houses is there, and you can see the spouts, and if you look real close, you see two spouts coming out of it.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what, what you're telling us, and that's why I ask. I don't see a date stamp on it, so I don't know when those pictures were taken, but it always appears to me that is, you know, that level is very close to, to the river level, and that's why I just want to be clear.
Derek, you have, the mic is yours. You have the floor.
Yeah, just quickly, to the north of Mr. Sabat's property, there is an outfall that goes to the river. The, the couple of properties to the north of his are being inundated with river water because it's backing up the county drain into that area. To the south of Mr. Sabat's property, that low area through there, that's pretty much rainwater pooling up in that area.
I just want to be clear as to what, what he's telling us.
My understanding is, my understanding is when the county reconstructed West River Road in that area a long time ago, the, the road grade was brought up. That area there used to be the same grade as a river. When they brought the road grade up, they essentially created a pool. That water is sitting in that area, so I've been talking to Mr. Sabat about getting his neighbors together there to put in for a drainage grant, to try to put in a central drain through that area and take the water out of there and find that permanent solution to that, so that's what we've been talking about.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Tom.
And it was two weeks ago. I have the dates on.
All right, let's wrap this up. We've got, you've got the dates established. We've got a, we've got Derek working on a, on a solution. Other public comment tonight?
Bill Heil. I live on East River Road. I've attended this meeting, and right now I have a, for want of a better term, a heavy heart. I've watched the way things have functioned here, and the tone and tenor of it has been repeated over and over and over again for quite a bit of time. I had a conversation in the recent past with, with a gentleman and asked, who asked if I was angry about the decisions that had been made regarding this police commission, if I was angry with individuals, and I said, "No." And the point I was making was that, and I was talking as if I were in one of your shoes, you have been elected by this citizenry to make decisions on their behalf, and if I were there, I would have that same awareness. And what that means is that on a given week, if, if I disagree with you, a couple of weeks go by, there might be a new decision. We don't even know that's going to be on the agenda yet. We're going to have to find a way to talk with each other respectfully and to listen to each other, and even if we disagree with you, possibly find some grain of thought in there that we could use to modify and make a better decision for the public. What I'm encouraging you to do is to think about that. And as people telling you that your, your seats here could be challenged at election, I can find grains of truth in why that would be worthy, but at the same time, you've got, what, fourteen, fifteen months? I haven't, I don't have a calendar in front of me where you still have responsibilities to this community. You're intelligent people. I'm asking you to simply be more respectful of one another and try to make decisions that people have pride and confidence in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heil.
Thank you, Mr. Heil. Other comment from the public tonight?
Hi, Mark Mills, West River. It's okay if I can't change gears a little bit and get away from everything we're talking about? Okay. Am I allowed to ask a question at this point regarding one of the action items? Are we way beyond that? Spot the bike path, number three. My only question, is it okay? The only question I had really is, is there a township official that oversees it, a building official that oversees the, the work that's being done, whether it be on the asphalt, whether, whether it's on the, the bridge reconstruction or whatever you got going on?
It's managed by the BIP, the committee, and, but the township engineer and the township manager would be ultimately responsible for seeing it's done properly.
Well, the bike path itself. I mean, any kind of project that is awarded through either bid or non-bid or just given out, however it happens.
So Heil would be the one you'd want to talk to.
Okay, because I did a four-year request a while back regarding that, and there was, there was no response. I shouldn't say no response. There was no person to provide, and I was specifically looking for a township official that oversees it, but it would be the engineering company that oversees it?
Sure. I mean, he, he's the one that pulls the shots on it. We're paying him twenty-five thousand dollars to do the job, so.
Okay, so then he comes back through after the project is done, gives it his seal of approval or whatever the case may be?
Right.
Okay. Can I also touch on something you said earlier regarding the disorderly people that come into your offices? If they're disrupting, when people come in and cursing at all the employees, which is unacceptable, if they're disrupting business operations, that's disorderly conduct. You should call the police department and have somebody come in and take care of it. There's no reason for anybody to sit back and take that kind of abuse from anybody.
Absolutely not. And then-
So far, they, when we told them to leave, they left.
Oh, okay. I thought maybe it was like an ongoing thing, they weren't going to leave. Okay, I misunderstood that. That's all I have. You've got some extra minutes, you can go away.
Just, just to be clear, we actually put out a RFQ and an RFP to engineering companies, and we hire a township engineer to help the township oversee these, any construction projects, any engineering projects that we do.
Thank you for that. I was just curious because when I, when I asked a question before through the four-year process, there was nobody that was, I guess not one person that was providing, and I simply wanted to ask that in front of the board here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Additional public comments? Seeing none.
Support.
Moved by the treasurer, seconded by trustee buddy. Those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none offered. Let's make it at ten nineteen. Call the meeting adjourned. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, and I'll see you in October.